All right, we are broadcasting and recording and on YouTube.
Give people a minute to get in here.
The attendees are
Yeah, coming in.
Are populating now.
Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, January 26th. This is a meeting of the Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education. This is our second night of public forum on the budget. We also held a public forum last night. Heard from a number of members of our community with comments on the budget, and this is a second opportunity for community members to approach the board with their thoughts and comments. I'll repeat some of what I said last night. We welcome anyone who is a Guilford resident to comment tonight on the agenda. If you would like, I'm sorry, on the budget, if you would like to comment on the budget, we ask that you put your name and your address in the Q and A box, which you should find on the bottom of your Zoom screen. And then one by one, we will let you into the Zoom part of the meeting. We'll ask you to turn on your camera and then, and then welcome your comments. I'm going to ask that you try to limit your comments to four minutes. This is to allow anyone who wants to speak time to speak. Much like we did last night, if we are assured that we get through everyone who is interested in speaking and still have time left, I'm happy to invite you back to either finish comments or comment on something you didn't have a chance to comment on. I absolutely hate having to cut anyone off. So, so again, we will provide that opportunity at the end if there is still time. I am going to turn it over to Dr. Freeman for just a moment to give him an opportunity to comment on anything we heard last night or make any further clarifications before we invite the public in.
Thank you, Dr. Bell Stracey. Again, I'll keep this brief, briefer than last night. I did want to comment on, on the commentary that we heard, particularly around the topic of music. The majority of the comments that we heard last night were around the music program at Adams. I want to start by thanking everybody who came out and spoke. I know this may sound odd as I am the individual who has recommended a reduction in the music staffing at Adams this year. But I do want to say that I really appreciated hearing the passion and the enthusiasm and the value and the support around that program. That means a lot and that helps us as we think about making these decisions. I also want to clarify or respond to at least a couple of the concerns that I heard expressed last night. One, and I think one of the common concerns that we heard was a concern around the scheduling of teachers in music, particularly around the idea that music teachers through their personal training, through their professional experience tend to specialize, that music teachers, although it is a seven through, sorry, a K through 12 generalist certification that we know through our experience here in Guilford, that teachers tend to specialize as a vocal, a vocal specialist or a strings specialist or a band specialist. I do want to note that this proposal would in no way change the practice in Guilford of scheduling teachers based upon their strengths or their individual areas of specialization. To give an example, I mean, to sort of illustrate that, if, if we're suggesting at Adams reducing the full-time equivalent staffing from 3.4 to 2.4, that would not mean that we would remove one of those specialists from that building and therefore not have a strings specialist who was available to service the students at Adams. If you're thinking about 2.4 FTEs, perhaps the easiest illustration, and this would be one way that we would schedule. It's not necessarily where we will end up, but you could assume that there would be a vocal specialist who spent 80% of her time at Adams and then taught an additional class at Baldwin or the high school or even at the elementary level, as I heard suggested last night. You could have a strings specialist who spent 80% of his or her time at Adams and taught a class elsewhere, and you could do the same with bands. So that 2.4 in Adams could be 3.8 assignments. Now, again, that doesn't mean individuals would lose 20% of their salary. It means that they might travel and discharge part of that responsibility elsewhere. Again, I'm not suggesting that that will be the staffing. That is one way that you could achieve that kind of staffing. What is important is I'd like the community to know that this recommendation in no way suggested that we would be moving away from the practice of scheduling people to their strengths or into their areas of special, you know, the areas in which they've specialized as musicians. The second concern that I think I heard expressed over, over and over last night was a concern that this reduction would be a loss in quality, would be a loss in contact time, would be a loss in the ability for teachers to meet the needs of their students, to develop relationships, to get to know their students and to give them the sort of personalized contact that is, you know, required not just in music, but in all of our instruction. I want to respond to that in a couple of ways. First, I want to again reiterate that this proposal in no way suggests restricting the offerings. We will continue to offer vocal and strings and band in, in Adams next year, even should we move forward with this recommended reduction. It in no way reduces contact time. The number of times teachers, students will see those teachers and the amount of time students will see those teachers will remain consistent with what it has been in last year and previous years. And finally, what I really want to sort of touch base is class size. So as we think about class size, there will be some impact on class size in these music classes. But what we failed to do in this conversation so far is put that into context. Currently at Adams today, as we have students enrolled in music classes at Adams today, including the general music classes, which were a new addition into the schedule this year. The average class size in a music setting is 10.1 students. So when we're talking about the number of students that teachers are working with at any one period of time, we're talking about 10 students. If we don't adjust the staffing in Adams next year, you'll actually begin to see that number decrease. We will drop to nine and a half students. We don't have half a student. That's an average. But we'll be looking at an average of nine and a half students per class next year. And with the projected enrollment declines that we've been seeing at the elementary over the last several years, that will continue to decrease. Even with this proposed change, should the board adopt the recommended reduction of one teaching position in music at Adams, the projected class sizes next year are 13. We'll be looking at approximately 13 students per class size. That's obviously an increase over 10, but it's still an exceptionally generous class size even for music instruction. It is one that other districts in Connecticut will be jealous of. So again, I really appreciate the comments last night and I value those comments and we will reflect on those comments. But to be clear, this proposal will not limit or reduce the offerings that we have in music at Adams. It will not limit or reduce or change the contact time that students have in those offerings. It will not move us away from the practice of scheduling music teachers into their strengths or into their areas of specialty. It will impact class size, but it will impact class size, I would suggest marginally, leaving us with, with still very generous class sizes that will still afford teachers the opportunity to know their students, work individually with their students, develop relationships with their students that will continue to extend over years and build that passion for music that we heard about last night. So again, I just wanted to clarify that as we open up for commentary tonight, and, and I know that most of this evening is to hear from the community and not from me. So Dr. Bell Stracey, with that, I would suggest that we're ready to open it up to the community.
I'm off mute now. Wonderful. That sounds terrific. So why don't we invite the first person in who'd like to?
We have Rebecca Chung who would like to speak to us, and we do have a queue that is building in the Q and A box.
Okay.
All right. Can everyone hear me?
We can. Rebecca, can you turn on your video so we can?
Sure. Just a second. I thought it was on.
No problem.
Do you see me now?
We can. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Just very quickly, I wanted to take a quick moment to acknowledge Dr. Freeman and the rest of the board members for helping our community navigate through an unusual school year due to the pandemic. Thank you for continuing to foster a safe and enriching learning environment for all the students. As you know, for many years, members of our community and myself have advocated for more art time, specifically for the elementary students across our district. It is now disheartening to see that art is now seemingly pitted against Spanish within our own community. I hope we can move forward and we can continue to invest what makes our school system attractive for the future to help our students become global citizens. I hope to see world language integrated into art, music and library, that all the specials continue to grow at all levels. I am fully in support of the more art time, no cost item in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Bell Stracey, we have Peg Egan.
Yes, hi. Welcome.
Hello there.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
So I just, I, I first of all, want to thank the board for being so receptive to all these comments and Dr. Freeman for your, just want to thank you for, you know, for hosting this and the board for hosting this. This is a wonderful opportunity for us. So I'm, I'm the guy that started the petition that's been circulating, aimed towards helping the Adams music teachers keep that FTE staffing position. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to explain some of these numbers a little bit because, you know, I was, I was here last night. I didn't speak. I wanted to take this opportunity to clarify some of the numbers because I know there was some concern about who had signed the petition. And I wanted to talk a little bit about that. So at first, there was some concern about, you know, members outside of our community having signed this petition and it kind of skewing the numbers a little bit, giving us rose colored lenses about this, about this petition. So here are the numbers. As it stands right now, the petition has 1,828 signatures. Now, as the creator of the petition, I have a way to, you know, see which, which of these signatures were procured through advertising on the website and through, you know, you know, people just all around the nation coming and seeing it. And that number is 758. So 758 out of our 1828 signatures are not members of our community. However, if you subtract that number, you still have 1,070 people who presumably heard about this petition through members of the community, or they are members of the community, or they know members of the community. I wrote Dr. Bell Stracey and Dr. Freeman an email last night detailing this and the, the numbers in that email were a little bit lower, mostly due to the number of anonymous signatures that we have. So while there are 736 detailed, you know, actually listed members of people, listed numbers, listed people on the signature list that I sent over to you to the board last night, the, the rest of the signatures, you know, to bring us up to that kind of thousand mark can probably be attributed to anonymous signatures. So, you know, people have been throwing around this, throwing around this 1,800 number and, you know, 758 people out of state who support our cause is not chopped liver. That, I think that says a lot about the validity of the, the music cause. But even just focusing on the community members, we have 1,000 people in our Guilford community who support keeping this full-time music position. And I think that's really, really powerful. You know, the points made last night that, you know, music isn't the same as, you know, as teaching a language arts class, that, you know, we're spreading these teachers even thinner. I couldn't agree more. And I just wanted to clarify these numbers and reiterate the fact that we have, you know, at the very least, 1,000 members of our community in support of keeping this full-time music position. And quite a number of people who, who don't know anything about us who support it too. So thank you so much to the board for, for keeping this open and, and I hope you'll reconsider, you know, keeping the music department strong. When I heard that we were thinking of cutting it, you know, it was frankly sad. I moved to Guilford because, I moved to Guilford my freshman year of high school and we moved here because of the music program. You know, we could have moved to Branford or Madison, but we came here because of the music program. So it's, you know, it's very important to, very important to my family that we keep it strong. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And I just, I, I want to clarify, we are happy to receive petitions from the community at any point. As, as the Board of Education in Guilford, Connecticut, the reason it's important to understand how many Guilford citizens sign something is that we're making decisions about the students educated in this town and about the taxpayers who pay taxes to support, support the system. So I appreciate that people outside of Guilford might support this as well. But our obligation is to the, the, the people of this community specifically, and it is, it is they who, who we need to respond to. So I just want people to understand why that clarification about exactly who signed the petition and more particularly whether, how many Guilford citizens does make a difference because of our, our commitment. Wonderful. Thank you. Hi Christine, welcome.
Hi there. Is it my turn?
It is. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
Okay. Good evening. And I, I'm also speaking of music teacher physician. And Dr. Freeman, thank you so much for your clarifications. So my objections were already passed along to the board and thank you, Dr. Bell Stracey, for your thoughtful reply. Last night, so many people spoke with such great passion and eloquence about what the music program means to students. And I agree with the things that were said and I can't, I can't say it better. But I'm going to speak about one aspect of the proposed cut that was touched on last night, but I think deserves to be highlighted. For a musician, nothing replaces the time spent playing the instrument with good technique. And all the talent in the world is really meaningless without practice and practice in turn is ineffectual without instruction. And playing an instrument is highly technical. A student really can't learn the violin on their own. So to progress, they need a lot of playing time in the company of teachers who are expert in the, in the instrument being studied. And as they progress, they become more independent and need less personal attention from a teacher. If the Adams position is eliminated and even if total class time remains the same, there will be less attention paid to each student as the classes grow larger. Well-resourced students can pay for opportunities outside of school to make up for it. But these options are expensive and may well be out of reach for families with fewer resources, especially now. And I am afraid that when the students get to the high school, there will be a gap in proficiency and the students who rely solely on the school for their prep will just not have as good a shot at making the more selective ensembles. Or those ensembles may not be able to play the kinds of sophisticated music that they do now. And our, I believe our music program is so special because it is high quality and inclusive. And unfortunately, that's just not quite as common as it should be. And we've been, I believe we've been able to pull that off because of amazing teachers who have lots of time with the students. So I'll, I'll close by saying, I probably wouldn't be able ever support this position being eliminated, even though I found those clarifications so reassuring. But given the kind of year the students are having, I feel deeply that next year is not the year to do it. Thank you so much for listening and for your service to the community.
Thank you, Christine.
We're inviting Allison Pellicula into the meeting.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi Allison. Yes, welcome.
I thank you. Thank you so much for having the opportunity to speak tonight. I very much appreciate the comments on music. I did want to turn slightly away from that to talk tonight about an issue close to our hearts at Calvin Lee School. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of 58 families from Calvin Lee School. And we strongly support the provision within Dr. Freeman's budget for a full-time position for our library and media specialist, Ms. Cheryl Monaco. Currently, Ms. Monaco is a .8 employee. In our increasingly digital world, Ms. Monaco has become an important source of technology, knowledge and training for both lead students and teachers. Library learning is no longer limited to books and other printed material. Ms. Monaco is helping students develop computer skills from basic typing and Chromebook use to more advanced concepts like green screen broadcasts and hour of code. In addition to technical skills, she also covers the critical topics of website safety and evaluating the validity of online sources. We believe that expanding her position will enable her to provide classroom teachers with more technical training to work in depth with individual students and small groups to support our school's maker space and facilitate more traditional library opportunities like book groups and author visits. We are so grateful that Mrs. Monaco is a part of our school community and we thank our principal, Mrs. Kenesha Lowly for advocating on her behalf. We hope you will recognize the work she has already put into this position and allow her to continue to build her many programs by making her a full-time employee. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have Jessica Hanson.
Hi there.
Hi Jessica, welcome.
So, hi, I'm Jessica. This is Alex, my son. He's a freshman at the high school. I have two boys, Alex and I have a sixth grader at Baldwin. I'm here to thank you for your time and effort in this budgeting process. So I originally was gonna come to talk to you just about Boys Swim, but I want to throw in a couple of things at the end. So I want to thank you for your support of Boys Swim this past now two years. There have been parents coming before this board for many, many years asking for help for a team. The boys started practice this week with the Greater New Haven co-op and they were so excited. While the boys enjoy swimming with a co-op, there's nothing like swimming as a standalone team for your own high school. The Guilford girls have had great success as a standalone team. And we are so happy for them. The current budget that is as proposed doesn't break down where the additional money is going. So whether the co-op continues next year or we move to a standalone team for the boys, I would urge you to consider that the boys would need money for appropriate coaching, transportation, pool fees, officials, uniforms, all those things. And those things are just are tangible, you know, it's sort of intangibles that, that need to be considered. So like I said, I was just gonna stop there, but I watched last night and there was just, you know, I was moved to tears at, at points. So Alex, Alex's classes, the freshman class is not one of the largest classes, but it, it's up there. And when he started Baldwin, it was, it was, they weren't necessarily given their first choice for music and he desperately wanted to be in band, but they assigned him to chorus. And I had to be that mom that called and said, is there anything you can do to switch him to band? And they, I then got a call like a couple of weeks into school and hey, we have a space for him now in band. Someone else wanted to switch and they assigned him to French horn. And maybe because nobody else wanted to play French horn because it's hard and but he took right to it and he went and went with, signed on to music and mentors. And then when he got to Adams, he made it to honor band and then he auditioned for Southern Regionals and made it and he auditioned, practiced every morning, every morning at 7:00 AM with Mrs. Oakley. And as a freshman, he made it to Wind Ensemble with Mr. Gom. And this is all without a private lesson. And, you know, originally never even got into band his, his fifth grade year at Baldwin. I, we, you know, finally, because he got into Wind Ensemble as a freshman, had to shell out some money for a private lesson. And maybe you heard him practicing, if you live near the green this summer, out on the lawn, our front lawn. But I feel really strongly about the quality of our music program. Finally, really quick. It is my opinion that what we currently have in place for world language is not enough. To take time away from our youngest learners is the opposite of what we should be doing. The US lags behind the rest of the world in bilingual education. Like others have mentioned about music, learning another language lights up another part of a child's brain. And we've long known that the earlier we teach kids another language, it's easier for them to learn and retain. Studies show that the critical time is up to the age of 10 and after that it becomes significantly harder to become fluent. So we need more hours, not less. We have an IB program at the high school, which seems counterintuitive that we would be taking away foundational building blocks for Spanish. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Lila Mustakos is joining the meeting. Dr. Bell Stracey.
All right. Hello, welcome. Can you hear me? Hello, Lila? Can you hear us?
Is that me, Lila?
Yes, it is. Can you hear us? We, we can see you and hear you. Okay, welcome.
I'm sorry. I'm having some computer problems.
That's okay.
Thank you so much. I too want to, first of all, thank you so much for allowing so many people to speak. I am so excited to speak about the music program. And I could easily speak endlessly about the importance of our music program in Guilford, like so many other people have. However, I want to speak to two specific issues that I really think the board should seriously considering regarding the program overall. I know we're talking about Adams specifically, but I do feel that any changes in staffing are going to affect down and up. We're gonna trickle down. We're gonna trickle up. And I know we're all aware of this incredible program that we have. And I speak not only as a parent of Guilford students who benefited from the program, but I am a music educator myself, teaching in another shoreline school system as their middle school, general music and chorus teacher. And I can count on one hand, the other school systems in Connecticut that are fortunate enough to have a music program parallel to Guilford's. Music's a subject that speaks to the soul. It trains the brain, the body, and it is the perfect form of self-expression. And during this last incredibly difficult year, we have all turned to music and the performing arts to heal, express our frustrations, our sorrows, entertain ourselves, connect with others. And now that our students can finally see the light at the end of the tunnel and hope that all these special extra musical activities and traditions that had so much joy to their lives might return, we want to take them away and write when students really need them the most. And by reducing staff, the extras will have to go. As it is, the music staff in Guilford work around the clock. I know this for a fact. They put in rehearsals hours before school, after schools, during their lunch periods. There is no possible way that a reduction of a full-time teacher will not affect these things. I had two children, actually twins, who participated in the Guilford music program, starting in fifth grade when we moved to town through 2018, when they graduated from GHS. And some of these events were the most defining and memorable parts of their school years. And I could mark the growth of my children from the programs and concerts, starting with Coco Cafe at Baldwin and playing Wipeout in the sixth grade band, playing in the honor band, the jazz band at Adams, going to Six Flags, playing the combined concert with the eighth grade and the Wind Ensemble, playing with Mo Treasure Pleasure twice, going to Regionals Allstate Pep Band, traveling to Disney, Montreal, Brookly Jazz Festival and Barcelona, playing the pit for the musical and winning best school pit orchestra and playing at the Strawberry Socials. And these are all events that music staff run that are extra. My sons were very different. My son Ben was a trombone player in the band. He played at Adams in the honor band, GHS band, the Wind Ensemble Jazz Band Symphony. And he's what Mr. Gom used to describe as a good, I lost my spot. I'm sorry. He was a good section player. As he got into high school, he became very involved in the lacrosse program. He was in the architecture program. And he started to drop out some of the extra music activities, but he stayed in Wind Ensemble until his senior year in high school. And he attended the Barcelona trip, which he told me last summer was the high point of his senior year. And GHS met his needs. But his twin brother was different. He was a child for whom music was the reason that he breathed. He was, he still is an extremely talented and motivated clarinet and sax player. He lived in the music room at GHS and at Adams. He was one of the first music mentors. He often stayed after school to hang out with Mrs. Oakley or Mr. Gom or Mr. Boats. And I'm not sure they always enjoyed it, but they never turned him away. He was the first kid to rehearsals. And the high point of his year was when the Wind Ensemble seating chart was posted or the day the musical was announced because he would run to see what the wind parts were like. He is not the typical music student. But GHS, as well as Baldwin and Adams, met his needs. But GHS, as well as Baldwin and Adams, met his needs. And the program in Guilford right now meets the needs of the average music student, the advanced music student and the exceptional music student. And there were several students in his graduating class that were exceptional. They now are pursuing careers in music and related fields. And these kids did not have to go outside of the school building to access an appropriate education. The thing that is so important about our town is that Guilford, unlike most school systems, treat music as important to our children as every other subject area. And my son could get advanced placement in music and he could have a high-level ensemble experience like any other academically gifted student. And that is one of the reasons we moved to Guilford. And that is the reason we decided to keep him at GHS. Were he not in it, was he in a different high school, we would have gone to a magnet school or ECA. Mrs. Fonsello and Mrs. Oakley went out of their way to motivate him. And when Stephen was going to high school, I spoke frankly with Sue Oakley about the high school because we were gonna move him and she said, Mr. Gom will challenge him. And boy, was she right. Mr. Gom is-
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I know, I'll try to, you know, he, they helped him navigate his successes, his disappointments. He had a very horrible time his junior year personally and they were there for him. I don't think he would have come to school without that program and without them. They guided him through his college auditions. They were advisors for his capstone project, which culminated in a full recital and an oral presentation on the evolution of clarinet performance practice. And when he attended the Boston Conservatory as a freshman, he was well-prepared by our music program. The first piece he played at Boston Conservatory was the piece he played with Mr. Gom at the end of senior year in high school. He hurt his wrist when he was a freshman and the high school and middle school staff were still there for him. He was volunteering with Mrs. Oakley to help with the honor band. He worked with Mr. Gom, he worked with Mr. Boats. They, they kept him going even after this. And yesterday, he found out that he passed a preliminary round for the Marine Band auditions and he has a good chance of being chosen for this coveted program. And he said to me today, the new staff at Guilford is the one who prepared him. If we cut a music position in this district, it's going to trickle down and it's going to trickle up. It's not just about class sizes. I know this for a fact. I know that all the students suffer and music will not, the music program won't meet the needs of all the students in Guilford anymore. And that is the thing that is special and unique about this program is that we meet. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're inviting Jack Thompson to join the meeting.
Okay, can you hear me now?
You can. Jack, do you have a video that you can put on?
Yes, I do. Okay, how's that?
Wonderful.
Okay.
Welcome.
I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Jack Thompson. And I am sometimes now introduced to people as Jack, used to be Tom Boats. Because when I finished my career, after 37 years in Guilford, I was doing the orchestra and jazz ensemble. However, I came to Guilford in 1964, the first year teacher, with 20 students in the band. They hired me full-time and they said, you've got the time, just go and build the program. Well, in a short time, we had 100 students. 1970, we built Baldwin School and we had two large programs. And it's been my pleasure to watch this program over my 37 years and my 20 years retirement here in Guilford and watch this service my children and my grandchildren. And of course, it's very, very dear to my heart. I can't help but think that Mrs. Mustakas talked about what the school has done and the teachers have done for her son. I think if they were stretched further with more traveling and assignments, it would be very hard to accommodate the needs that Stephen had at that time. I was thinking back over students over the years and I'm sure many people have no idea that we had a student who plays with Ray Charles, was a music director for Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. We have a student who became, went to music school, but then heeded the calling to become a priest and is now the prior of a monastery in Italy where his monks won a Grammy Award in international recognition in many interviews by TV news magazines. A young man who I had in the eighth grade when he went to a festival and heard Maynard Ferguson play, he said, I want to play with Maynard Ferguson someday. Well, when a kid says that to you, it's like saying, I want to be president of the United States. That is the most outrageous, incredible, high-powered band. Well, after Mike played lead trumpet for Glenn Miller, Lawrence Welk and many other bands, he did the last tour with Maynard Ferguson. We have a student who lives in Korea now, who writes Broadway-type musicals in Korean and he received an equivalent of a Tony Award in Korea for that, for that performance. Another student we had that was our jazz pianist, who after two years at Yale said, I really have to go into music, got a doctorate in music composition, now teaches music composition at Yale. And one of our former students who's a great jazz saxophone player is now director of the William Hall High School Band in West Hartford, which is probably one of the best, if not the best, high school program in the United States. It was tough. We used to have to compete with them at festivals. But anyway, we have many students who have done outstanding things. I could talk forever about them. But there are many students who continue playing in the town band, which Mark Gom has done a fantastic job with. But my main concern now is the proposed cut at Adams. Because what I see happening here is the last teacher to be hired is the new band director of Baldwin. Obviously, she will be bumped and will have to be covered from within the department. And this presents a huge scheduling problem. Principals have to make compromises around times of staff ability. Everything gets stretched out. And I was glad to hear Dr. Freeman's comments about how much he understands the expertise that is needed in each area of music curriculum. Now, over the years, we've lost a fourth grade string program, fifth grade general music at Baldwin and a high school string specialist who had only .2 job and stayed there and did a wonderful job, but she couldn't stay any longer, so she had to take, she was recruited full-time in Fairfield, where they have over 14 string teachers. You know, I look at this whole thing as juggling a schedule is like a Jenga game. You've played a Jenga game where you build a tower out of blocks and each contestant has to remove a block without the tower falling. Well, we've lost so many pieces of the tower, we're down to the skeleton. And, you know, most music directors in a high school, their worst nightmare is that the feeder programs will collapse, fall like a Jenga tower. Our foundations have been chipped away and you can only stretch our teachers so far without losing quality, not to mention morale. If we're to keep this treasure that has taken decades to build, we need to look very closely for every opportunity to ensure its preservation. I implore the board to work, it's hard to save what we have, is our teachers have worked to build it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Bell Stracey, we have Christine Cohen who would like to join us.
Hey Christine.
Hi everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you. First, let me just start by thanking you all for your service. You've been so accessible and transparent in the face of these trying times. And I know I for one really appreciate that as a member of this community. And I also remember all too well, as a former member myself, the agony of deciding how you're going to deliver a fair and balanced budget that meets the needs of our students and doesn't translate into a large tax increase to our community. So, so thank you for all that you do. I appreciate all the comments with respect to the arts and that's not what I'm here to talk about tonight. But as a parent of three budding musicians, I'm so grateful for the opportunities that our music program has provided. There's a compelling case to maintain those positions just in seeing the products of all our amazing dedicated staff. And I know these decisions are really tough in the face of declining enrollment, but for all the reasons so eloquently iterated by parents and students, I hope there's another path forward absent of any reductions. So you all know by now that I've long advocated for swimming at Guilford High School. We have an incredibly talented bunch of young men and women and I'm thrilled that we've seen the formation of teens in recent years. So I'm here tonight simply to offer my thanks for the consideration of more swim funding and advocate for a larger allocation. While the boys are in a cooperative agreement that's really working very well right now, we're uncertain as to what the future holds for that arrangement and for our boys' swimming. Currently, there's approximately $6,000 allocated for the boys' team. And even despite an abbreviated season this year and our cooperative arrangement between the four towns, we will still fall short of the dollars needed to fully support the team. We will be relying on parents to make up the difference. So my understanding is that there is an additional $7,000. I did see it. I combed through the budget proposal and saw $7,000 in funding for transportation to be maybe split between the boys and girls. I'm unsure of how that will be allocated, but hopeful with an even split that we will both be able to cover the very expensive undertaking of getting swim teams to and from their practice pool as well as to meets. And I thank Dr. Freeman for that inclusion and hope for its passage. I would just ask for further consideration of the exorbitant costs that we're asking parents to pay in order to have their children swim and ask for some parity as we look to grow both the boys' and girls' teams. You know, we have many teams at Guilford High School. All are supported differently in different financial means, ways. So there's, you know, pool rental fees. You know, I heard Jessica Hanson mentioned some of these things, where we have coaching costs, uniforms, officials and so much more to consider beyond busing. And an additional, say, $10,000 towards swim on top of what is set forth in this proposal does very little to the budget. It's a small fraction, but it means a tremendous amount to these swimmers and those who have the want to join, but perhaps not the financial means to do so. And so I would just ask for these considerations as you deliberate the budget. And I just want to thank you again for all that you're doing.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. And Dr. Bell Stracey, we have Jennifer Yaksall, who we're inviting to join the meeting.
Okay, am I on?
Hi Jennifer, welcome.
Hi, and thank you for this opportunity to speak again. Tonight, I'm prepared for a shorter presentation. And I'd like to start by echoing others and really thanking you for your work on the budget. I know it's really difficult to figure out where to cut. But eliminating the Adams music position is going to drastically affect our program. And I'd like to give a little bit more information about my background. I've been a string player nearly my entire life, a string teacher for decades, and I was the assistant to the orchestra at Baldwin for three years. I'm also an attorney and a pilot. The attorney part gives me a lot of experience figuring out how facts go together to make the big picture. The pilot part gives me a lot of experience with bird's eye views. So tonight, I'd like to put those two pieces together and give you the big picture of what a quarry looks like up close from the air. So the outside edge looks beautiful. The people on the ground driving around see only a lovely mountainside. But the inside is being excavated out piece by piece with each cut weakening the walls. And we can think of our music program as the heart of a mountain made up of three areas, Baldwin, Adams and the high school. And when the string teacher presence was removed from the high school, as Jack Thompson spoke of, an important chunk of that part of the mountain was excavated out. This cut excavates another 30% out of the middle part of that mountain. And as I said last night, that 1.0 position has to come from somewhere. And every time our music staff is asked to teach an instrument in a family that they don't play, even more is excavated out. And I understand that you're saying that that's not the intent to shuffle teachers around to instruments they don't play, but I just don't see how it works if you take away a 1.0 position down in Baldwin, how that's gonna work without shuffling some teachers into teaching things that they don't specialize in. And you could not have asked for better evidence as to the fact that that doesn't work than what the high school student Bobby Hague said last night, who just spoke so politely and sweetly. So he has boots on the ground and firsthand knowledge. And what he said is that while a string teacher can do a great job teaching theory, when he tries to teach performance winds, which in Bobby's case was jazz ensemble, the students, quote, "did not learn that much." And this makes perfect sense because theory is book learning and any one of our fabulous teachers can do it. But they can't teach an instrument in a family that they don't play. And asking them to do it is like asking a gastroenterologist to do neurosurgery. He can try, but frankly, it would be unreasonable and unfair to ask and it's highly unlikely that that operation would be much of a success. So if you make this cut, you can tell Guilford residents that it's not a programmatic change. We'll still offer orchestra, band and chorus. And from that perspective, just like the facade of a quarry, the program may look the same, but what we'll really have is an ongoing excavation surrounded by a narrow strip of beauty. And that beauty will come from our fabulous and dedicated music staff who will be trying their very best to do an impossible job in an effort to preserve the excellence of our program. I strongly suggest that before you vote to eliminate this position, ask any musician you know how well they could teach an instrument they don't play, especially in a different family. Ask if they would choose to have their child taught by someone in this situation and how well they think it would work out. Because that's what this cut and shifting around music teachers will do to the students in our music program. Those coming up the ranks will have a very different experience from the many who have benefited from the program over the years. And it will not be a better one. These positions, the positions that Dr. Freeman spoke about last night that were added to elementary school music obviously do nothing to alleviate this problem. So from a bird's eye view and putting together all the relevant facts, that is the big picture that I see of how this cut plays out. So again, I ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Bell Stracey, we have Nuria Miller who will be joining us.
Can you see me?
Welcome. Yes, Nuria, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. I am here, I wanted to talk about, well, I wanted to thank everyone on the board of Ed and Dr. Freeman for the time and all the work that you guys put into all these meetings. I know it's a lot of time that you have to spend doing all of these. But my name is Nuria Miller and I am here to talk about our next year's budget. I know you want to keep it short, but I think my letter is a little bit long. I am in full support of the full-time social worker for the Guilford High School, the resident program. I think it's a great idea, the family equity liaison and the funding for the swim teams. For the-
Oh, Nuria, we lost you. Oh, are you there?
I am here.
Okay, we lost you there for a second.
Okay, so I was saying that for the resident program, I have a question. The dollar amount that you see represented here is not the salary associated with the position, but it is an existing position already. Are we like losing one of our elementary school teachers? Or how are we gonna be doing the, where does this actual position comes from? Then I also want to tell you that we've been hearing about all the music department cuts and that a lot of people don't agree with it. And I also want to talk about the world language program. I have one student at Adams Middle School who has benefited amazingly from the music program that our district offers. She started playing the French horn with Mrs. Fonsello and she was in fifth grade. And she continued playing at Adams with Mrs. Oakley and she was also part of the honor band. I have a fifth grader who wasn't so lucky. He's not playing any instrument this year since fifth grade music doesn't include an instrument and who will be behind one whole year, assuming that the next year will be able to play an instrument. I also have a first grader- I also have a first grader at Guilford Lakes who loves her music class, and she's always singing and wanting to learn more and more. I am happy that you clarify how the teachers are going to work when the cuts are made, but it doesn't make me feel any better that we're going to be losing a great teacher. Like they say, I feel like learning music is the same as learning a language. You need to have somebody that specializes in what they are doing to be able to learn it well. I am a certified K-12 world language teacher, but you wouldn't hire me to teach a French class because I specialize in the Spanish language. So you couldn't just say like, well, all these teachers are certified the same, so we can just switch them around. I don't think that's how it's supposed to be working. I would like to say that I've always supported the art program, but I don't think I will support it if I knew that it was going to be going against the world language program, which I make a joke last year about saying how I was going to start fighting to have language programs for the kindergarteners, too. And now we're seeing that we are not only going to not get kindergarten for the Spanish kids, but we're also not going to have more than one class of Spanish. So when Mr. Freeman was talking about the residency program, he said it will help us to be better able in future years to more diversify our teaching. And the world language program in the elementary school helped us diversify our teaching. We have a teacher who is from the Dominican Republic. We have a language teacher who is from Colombia that we lost to the high school. And like you said, all students deserve the opportunity to see teachers of a diverse background and to experience people who are not all very much like they are as they come through their school system. And what a better way than to hear another language and a different accent like mine. The foreign language in elementary school program that U4 offers is a program that focuses on communication, and it helps support other content areas such as science, social studies, and all other subjects in the elementary classroom, not on culture, as it was mentioned at last week's meeting. Another purpose of this program is to build enthusiasm for language learning, and the primary stress is on understanding and speaking. An instruction is brought to the students through different songs, rhymes, games, et cetera, all in different contexts of the different cultures that share the same language, Spanish. Not all countries that speak Spanish share the same culture, and learning about them opens their eyes to new worlds and new possibilities. Most kids in Guilford start learning Spanish when they are in preschool. Most of the preschools around town have Spanish instructions one time a week for the little ones and two times a week for the older kids. Instead of looking to switch the program, we should be looking at increasing the program and adding kindergarten to the Spanish schedule. I'm really surprised that all these parents haven't come here to talk to you at the meeting and saying how they think we should be doing the kindergarteners, too. So when all these preschoolers get to kindergarten at our elementary school, they forget everything that they have learned because they go a whole year without any Spanish until they're in first grade. They are not practicing, and then they just don't remember anything. I think it would be in the best interest of all the specials, art, music, physical education, Spanish, and we were missing library at last meeting, to be taught in the same amount of times for each grade. This means all of the classes being one hour a week, including the kindergarteners now. I know that you heard from our community about increasing art for more than three years, but I don't recall anyone saying to decrease Spanish to be able to accomplish this. I am sure you don't want me to be at all your meetings and get a whole group of parents, I know you love me, Dr. Freeman, I know you do, but I'm pretty sure you really don't want me there, every board meeting to ask you to please reinstate the world language program. I feel it would be easy if we just don't do this. But in spite of myself, because the American Council of Teaching of the Foreign Languages recommends world language for a minimum of 30 minutes three times a week, which is why the program has been like that since the beginning, I had created a schedule, assuming we have three classes of each 11 from kindergarten to fourth grade, where all the specials can be done two times a week for 30 minutes each. That would mean that everyone would have five hours of specials a week, one hour a day. I know it takes a lot of time to create a schedule, but I think it will be possible to do this, you know, for elementary schools. Doing this will allow us to keep our foreign language teachers, which I think it has been hard to get because of coronavirus. I particularly haven't been looking for any job right now because I don't want to have to go into a school setting and be with all the students.
Nuria, thank you so much.
I am not done yet.
I'm going to ask you if you could come to a close rather quickly and happy to have you come back. Okay.
I just wanted to say that a different language is a different vision of life according to Federico Fellini. At the last Board of Education meeting last week, it sounded like you were very sure about this change when you said, and I quote, "We will be changing our staffing allocation at the elementary schools next year, adding to our positions," which I hope is not, it's only a misunderstanding from my part, and that you're open to all the suggestions that parents and teachers have voiced at the meetings. I'm always very supportive of the budget, but I'm not sure that I can be supportive of the budget. We're going to be cutting the music program and the world language program in our schools, and I am sure a lot of parents feel this way as well. You also said this is the most conservative budget yet, and that much of the next year will be recalibrating year. Much of next year, it will be about getting normal with masks. Will be about reestablishing the high-quality in-person instruction and collaboration that we have generated in the classroom. So maybe this is not the best year to be making these changes, and we should give it another year before we can consider doing all of these cuts. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for coming.
Dr. Ballast Tracy, we have Alexa Miller.
Wonderful. Hi, Alexa, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
I will be very brief. I want to thank you all for all of your hard work and thoughtfulness with all of these dilemmas. It's been quite a time, and I really appreciate everybody's service. I just wanted to offer my support of the growing art program at the elementary level and speak to what an incredible shift to the quality of the art educators there were at A.W. Cox. And I just observed in my daughter, when she moved from a preschool where the art instruction was really oriented towards craftivities, where everybody sort of did the same thing and had the same outcome and made the same craft. I observed when she moved from that kind of instruction to the instruction she got at A.W. Cox, like just this blossoming of learning in her artwork, but it was just creativity across the board. And so I want to thank you for your support in that. It's been a really long time coming. I do want to say, just echoing the sentiments of everybody, basically everybody speaking to music, speaking to swimmers. I do have two budding swimmers, and they're, you know, they're not at the high school level yet, but they're certainly coming and very enthusiastic. It's just really devastating to see the specials, to see Spanish, to see art, music, swimming, kind of like all contending, fighting for funds. And I just hope that there's a bird's eye view on that and a real concern about the corrosiveness of this incredible aspect of intelligence and applying creativity, you know, across all areas of life and learning. It's, and as far as like, I agree with all of the concerns about art coming at the cost of Spanish. And even though I'm for the art program, I'm also very concerned about that. And it seems that the real heart of the matter is the length of the school day. And we have one of the shortest school days in the whole state. And, you know, I think as we proceed with this, maybe that is something to look at. And the last thing I just wanted to say, coming back to art instruction and the quality of the instruction itself, I don't know if this is possible, but one of the big concerns I had about the limited art time in the half-hour periods is just so much of the time being used for setup and cleanup and the rush. And you sort of lose that, that deep time when the kind of cream can separate from the milk when a child is really focused. And that's also, I spoke, you know, last year about my concern about the burnout of the teachers just rushing, 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 and not getting to do quality art instruction. So it would be disheartening to see two half-hour blocks of art if we're, if we are in fact going to up the time. And I just wonder if there's a way to support deep time for the quality of the instruction as we move forward. That's all. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Amy Kreipe should be coming into the meeting.
Hi, Amy, welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay. So my name is Amy Kreipe, and I am the PTO president of Guilford Lakes Elementary School. But tonight, I am speaking with you as a parent. Thank you to the Board of Ed for having this open forum and giving us a chance to speak. I also want to applaud you for navigating the COVID pandemic and truly appreciate your efforts to keep us safe. And I want to make sure the teachers also know how much we support them and everything they've done this year. I have been a professional in the arts for over 20 years, and I've spoken previously at board meetings about my support for additional art time at the elementary school. And I wanted to thank you for hearing us. It is such an important outlet for kids to have to express their feelings, thoughts, et cetera, be it through art or music, which I also agree with the parents' comments on tonight and last night's Zoom in support of keeping the music structure as is, especially during these troubling times. I do want to say that my support for art doesn't mean that I wanted the livelihood of the world language teachers to suffer nor take away the learning of Spanish from the kids. There was a comment last night that I might have misunderstood, but where world language goes from 90 minutes to 30 minutes, and art would go from 30 minutes to 60. And I was curious where that extra 30 minutes would go and if both art and world language could meet for 60 minutes to make it more equal. Thank you.
Paul, do you want to take a minute to just explain the differences in who gets world language, right? It's not at kindergarten, so that it's, or simply at least state that it's not, it's not an even switch. There's a, there's a, it's a little more complicated than that.
Yes, it is, it's going to be a little bit more complicated. Kindergarten students receive art they had not been receiving world language, as you've heard. And there are considerations at the elementary level about even scaling this, so that students may receive a lesser amount of world language in one and two, but a greater exposure, greater contact time in three and four. Right now, obviously, what's going to happen is that the world language contact time is going to be reduced, the art contact time is going to be increased. It is not saving time. All of the time will be used. We're not looking to eliminate time or reduce teaching positions, but we are looking to increase one while reducing without eliminating the other. And, and the details of that may look different depending on which particular school you're at. There is some slight variation from school to school, or what grade lever your child is at. And the principals will work to finalize those schedules. And then again, I just want to clarify that we do expect to do curricular work in grades five through 12 at the end of that and to make sure that we are not losing, we're not losing program time. Obviously, we're giving up contact time, but we will not be allowing the students to finish their experience behind where they are currently. We will make up time by looking at instruction and efficiencies through vertical articulation five through 12.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments.
Yeah, thank you. Because I think we've also gotten a couple of emails that are confused about why it's not a one-to-one match, and there are reasons for that.
Of course, absolutely.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you.
And it looks like we are inviting Kate Biajetti into the meeting, and I hope I'm pronouncing the name correctly.
Hi.
Hi, Kate, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kate Biajati, and I'm here with my daughter Olivia, who just finished her third year on the girls' swim team. And we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to ask you to consider a stipend for the assistant coach positions for our teams. As you know, it was a huge year for the girls' team, especially after last year when we had our first ever win. And the girls have worked really, really hard the last few years. But a lot of the success is the behind-the-scenes work of the parents and the booster club to work with the board to continually, you know, get more and more funding to help us. And so we do, I want to take the opportunity right now to thank you, you know, for the support we have received. But going forward, it is crucial that we have an assistant coach to help build on the momentum of this year. It's my understanding that we may have, you know, 20-plus girls on the swim team, you know, for the next season. And it really, really is so important to have that assistant coach there to help develop the team and to support our efforts. So I just wanted to close by asking you to consider the stipend, you know, for these assistant coach positions. And I guess it's my understanding, too, that other pay-for-play teams have funds from the board for this already. So Olivia, is there anything else that, you know, you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to start off by thanking, as a Guilford swimmer, thanking the Board of Education for the funding and support that you guys have given the swim teams. Very appreciated. Also, I just wanted you to consider a stipend for the assistant coach. This will help our season, our next season going in and benefit the team a lot. Again, I just wanted to close by saying thank you so much, and I hope you guys have a great night.
Thank you.
And thank you both. And Dr. Ballast Tracy, I see Leslie Powell will be joining us.
All right. Hi, Leslie, welcome.
Hi, and thank you. I was on last night, and I had the privilege of speaking in support of the Adams Music Department last night, but I'm not here to do that again. I actually really feel compelled to address the issue of reducing world language instruction in the elementary schools. I have two points, and I'll be brief. The first point I want to make is that language acquisition, like the acquisition of skill in playing a musical instrument, is a practice. The only way to acquire a new language is to use it as much and as often as possible and from as young an age as possible. So infrequent exposure to a new language just doesn't cut it. A half hour, even an hour a week, doesn't really work. And in fact, I would argue that language instruction should take place every day of the school week, if that were possible. The goal of language instruction is to learn to speak and understand a language, and that is not the goal of an art class, and nor will it be the result of an art class. The second point is that if ever there were a time to enhance our youngest children's appreciation of other cultures and their facility with other languages, that time is now. Recently, we've seen so much bigotry in our national political life. And here in Guilford, in the wake of controversy relating to the new mascot, the focus on racial and social justice in school curricula, shouldn't we be strengthening and not weakening our commitment to teaching in areas such as world language? Learning a new language imparts not just cultural awareness, but cultural skill. Reducing world language just seems awfully out of step with the times. Those are my two points. In closing, I just want to say that both of my children are in the high school, so neither the music issue at Adams nor the language issues at the elementary school affect us directly. This is really just a matter of creating the kind of values-driven community I think we want to build and live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Silva is being invited into the meeting.
Hi, Jennifer, welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Thank you. Sorry about rookie mistake. Good evening, and I would like to start by thanking Dr. Freeman and all of the members of the Board of Education for your care in this process, for the opportunity to provide input tonight, and also for all of the hard work that you do all year round on behalf of our students. I'm here tonight to ask that you reconsider the proposed cut of a 1.0 full-time equivalent music position at Adams Middle School. I appreciate the notion that the staffing reduction is not intended to cause a programmatic change. However, I'm very concerned, since I haven't heard any details yet, as to how this would in fact be done. I'm skeptical that the reduction could be made without impacting the program and its quality. The professionals who teach chorus, band, and orchestra are each experts within their own subspecialty of performance music. These professionals are not interchangeable. Functionally, as others have mentioned, assigning a chorus teacher to teach band would be akin to asking a Spanish teacher to teach Chinese. We wouldn't do that, and we should apply that same rationale to the music program. My older daughter is currently in sixth grade at Baldwin in the first class that would be affected by this proposed budget cut. This is a class that has already lost so much of the This is a class that has already lost so much of the foundational performance music experience due to COVID-19 out of necessity. While each instructor at Baldwin has truly done the best that could be done under the circumstances, the reality is that my daughter now has a drastically reduced version of band that meets once every 10 school days, as opposed to the previous in-person version that met five out of 10 school days. In addition, there have been no true performance opportunities in the past year, though Mrs. M did a lovely compilation of the students' videos. And of course, again, none of this is a criticism. This is what has been necessary under these circumstances. This is a class that, if anything, is going to need extra support at Adams in order to rise to the level that GPS touts. That doesn't even get into the current fifth grade class, which hasn't even had the opportunity to participate in the program at all, nor what opportunities will exist for my younger daughter when she enters Baldwin as a fifth grader this fall. All of this will impact the level of music support needed at Adams. I'm not going to get into the many benefits of involvement in the music program, as I know many others have already brought these up over the past couple of weeks. However, I do want to mention the fact that the music program is an incredible social emotional support for our children. It is a place of connection, one that resonates with many GPS students long after graduation and throughout adulthood as well. It is, music making is at its core a community building experience. Our COVID lifestyle has taken away so many opportunities for connection and has presented an abundance of new social emotional challenges for our students. Please reconsider cutting what will ultimately be critical opportunities for connection and social emotional support at Adams. We need these opportunities for our children now more than ever. Thank you and be well.
Thank you.
And Dr. Ballast Tracy, I see Susan Khashaf, who's sir.
Hi, thank you very much.
Susan, welcome.
Thank you very much for everything you guys do and giving me the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. I am here as the parent of two high school students who have had their love of music nurtured through our music program and through the wonderful music teachers that they've worked with during the years. But I'm not here to talk about the personal benefit that we've had through the music program. I also want to allow us to think for a moment about the, the effects of that, that extend beyond the students and even the town of Guilford and all the wonderful performances that we're able to see when our students perform in different settings. The, the mentorship of the music instructors that, that they've worked with, starting with Coco Cafe and then the trios that were formed and all the things that are done by teachers in their free time, allowed my older daughter to form a trio from what had started as a quintet and one of those like performing, you know, in the bookstore at Christmas time. That trio has performed at funerals, birthdays, weddings, and all different things in the community. Many of it voluntarily and including during the pandemic outside of nursing homes, outside of windows to bring joy to, to our elderly citizens. They performed at the RBG vigil when everyone was very sad and did a beautiful rendition of Imagine that was very touching to people. And beyond what has happened in our community, the opportunities and the free time that, that Mr. Boats and Mrs. Bryan gave to those students, allowed them to apply for a grant to purchase instruments and give free music education to refugees at Iris. So my point is, this work is so important beyond what it brings to our really, really fortunate community that allows to have it and, and does extend beyond, beyond these kids and these families. So I really, and, and those are the things that when people are burnt out, they can't do. You know, Chris Jones dragging his baby over to, to all the different things that he does on his free time. If, if someone is pulled in five different directions, those, those things will definitely decrease. And they should, because they should at some point just preserve their own lives. So I just want to thank, thank you for thinking so deeply about this and for allowing us to speak about it. And I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see David Alpert is up next.
Okay. David, can you hear us? Hi, David, can you hear us? The connection issue perhaps. Oh, there we go. Hey, Dave, how are you? I think you're still on mute. Whoops. Looks like Dave's having trouble connecting. There we go. Hi.
Okay.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Sorry for the delay.
That's okay.
Thank you, Dr. Ballast Tracy, and, and thank you, Dr. Freeman. I don't want to reiterate everything everyone else has said about the music program. You know, being a musician, this is something that is very near and dear to me. Both my children graduated years ago, being a resident in Guilford for over 38 years. This is something that I think crosses all boundaries. It's hard to explain the effect it can have on, on children long after high school. But chorus, band, music, it's all essential. I know that you are left with an unrelenting job to try and find money. But I guess the, the one question I have aside from trying to initiate how and respond to how important music is, is there anything else that is being looked at in order to supplement the funding needed to keep the music teacher at Adams? I, I missed part of last night's meeting and, and the beginning of this meeting tonight. Is this the appropriate place to ask that question? Or have this, has this already been looked into?
I, I can simply tell you that this public forum tonight and last night is part of a, a budget deliberation process that includes looking across all, all programs by the board. It has been very carefully looked at by our Guilford Public Schools Administration. But this is, what happens now is an opportunity for the board to, to look at the budget and then interact with our administration as we come to some final decisions.
Okay, well, I, I won't belay the point. I, I would just like to say thank you for all you do. And if there's anything we could do to save that teacher, that music teacher at Adams, it would be fantastic. And I'm speaking on behalf of my kids who have made it very clear that even though they're out and about in the real world, it was an important part of their education in Guilford. They'll never forget it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Ballast Tracy, I see Valerie Ferrucci next in the queue.
Hi, Valerie, welcome.
Hello. As the board is aware, I have been speaking in favor for more art instruction at the elementary level for years now. I would like to point out the inequalities in the elementary specials. In a pre-COVID week, grades one to four for Spanish meet three times. Art meets once. I'm going to repeat that. Spanish meets three times, art meets once. The other two specials, PE and music, meet twice. I would like to remind the community that in recent years, music was also once a week. And now there are four full-time music teachers in our elementary schools, which I'm very appreciative of. I'm disappointed that this is seemingly boiling down to Spanish versus art. This does not seem to be the case, in my opinion, but it's simply, is simply about equality. I am in full support of the addition of two full-time art teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see Michelle Esteva next, and that is the last person that we have in the queue looking to speak at this time.
Mr., Dr. Freeman, I, I did see a name, Jason Gilmore, go by. I don't know if we've heard from him, so.
He, he appeared to step away from the meeting. We'll look again, we'll look again to see if he's returned.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Hi, Michelle, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I'm a parent of a fourth and eighth grader, fourth grader and an eighth grader. And I would like to thank all of you for the chance to comment and provide feedback on the proposed budget. I know this year has not been easy for any of us. And so I'd first like to say that I really appreciate the leadership in the school system from all of you to the principals who've had to make, you know, have done an incredible job. But especially the teachers who were asked to do the impossible and, you know, they did it. So I'm very grateful for, you know, just everything that you have done for us this year. However, I do want to speak about the importance of the music program. I wasn't sure how I was going to frame my reaction to it until Mr. G, Mr. Gom introduced himself or mentioned that he was the point four. And I had such a strong reaction to that because as we all know, he is so much more than that. And it's hard to quantify what the staff bring to Guilford. And I mean, all of Guilford, not just the school system, as other people have mentioned. It's hard to put a number on that. And it feels like it's a very, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but it's a very bureaucratic way of looking at something and it doesn't really capture what the kids need at this point, at this time. So if we start from there with what, what the students need, well, obviously, I think other people, as other people have mentioned, they are going to need extra help this year, after this year, going into next, the upcoming seventh graders. So I don't have the audacity to ask for a change from minus one to a plus two. But I think it's clear that with, even with a decrease in enrollment, the kids have really lost a great deal and they can use that help. And we're all doing our best. The schools are open. This is great. We're, you know, we're getting things done. But in order for a music program to really be successful, I think we need three things. There's the community support, which clearly we have, the high-quality staff that we have and want to, I want to keep. But there's also the time, the time that the kids spend learning together and practicing together and creating together. And right now, this is where things start, you know, have fallen apart, both in terms of the time, but also the togetherness. And also, just to interject, I think the time also does matter for world language. It work, it matters for music and it matters for world language. So right now, there's a social part that we're all missing. And I feel that the music program is really special in being able to provide this to our kids. You know, it's cross-curricular, you have math, you have science, there's language. But you also have, you know, an ability to feel good about working hard, building skills and getting good at something that is valued. And then getting together, getting together with others and then creating something together. And in Guilford, you have getting in with your peers and, you know, people who are a little bit older, a little bit younger than you. You have the mentoring program. It's just incredible. And I don't know, I don't know how you can quantify this. It's hard, you know? It's certainly more than whatever follows a dollar sign in the budget. It just, I, I don't think you can really put a value to what we have here. So when I step back and I look at the social needs, the emotional needs of my kids, music and the arts were certainly crucial in getting us through the really tough parts. Sue Oakley was amazing. She continues to be amazing. Mr. Gom, if you haven't seen it already, he led the Guilford Town Band in an incredible rendition of The Stars and Stripes Forever over the summer and, which was really tough. It was a tough summer. And there were lots of familiar faces from the music program, both staff, the students. It did me a lot of good and I didn't even play, you know? It just, I think when you have a good music program, everybody wins. It was certainly a factor. The music, the music program was certainly a factor in our decision to relocate to the US, specifically to Guilford. And it just, it's so, it's so dear to me. I can't, I don't know, it hurts to think of losing any of those teachers. So just to wrap things up, I'd like to ask you to really take a look, see if there's anything we can do to keep all of them where they are. Please don't let anyone retire. Don't let any of them retire. Just don't let them. Because I think, I really feel this is what our kids need right now. And, you know, I'm, I'm okay with 9.5 students in a class. I think that's great. Let's go for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it does appear that Jason Gilmore is back. We will be inviting him into the meeting.
Okay, wonderful. Hi, Jason, can you hear us?
I can hear you and see you, but do you hear me?
We can. We just, we're, we can't see you yet.
Huh, okay. Well, should I go forward or wait for the video?
You know what? Why don't you, why don't you go forward? Okay, go ahead.
All right. Well, I'm happy to be here in, to support the, the visual arts in, in, you know, in any public school, especially the, one in my own town. I am a middle school teacher. That I live here in Guilford, but I, I work in Hartford. So I teach middle school art there. I was happy to hear about the proposed increase for the art teachers and student, students' time with, with them. So that's great. I'm, I'm hope that the, the, that proposal goes forward. So I just wanted to make, make it, make a point about how important it is to, to have that, have that time with the art teacher. And to have, not only if the, the proposed increase goes forward, that continue to, to, to build that, that program and fund it properly. I mean, art is so important now, especially with, for people to process any kind of emotions that they have. You know, emotions are hard to deal with in any normal times, especially for, for kids and developing. But in a pandemic, it's even, it's three times as hard. So art is there for people to, to process what they're, what they're, what they're seeing and what they're experiencing on a daily basis. So without that, a lot of, a lot of stuff can get bottled up. You know, if you're not a musician, if that's not your thing, then you need something else. And so having the time with teachers is one thing. And, but then also make sure that you, I don't know what your budgets are like for, for the art supplies. It's, it's kind of always an issue for, for us in Hartford. I am, right now, I'm teaching the kids remotely. So they, generally in the, in Hartford, they do not, there's not a lot of supplies for the kids. It's hard to get them to their, their homes if they are home. So I was, I was blessed with a, receiving a grant from, from UConn. And so I got supplies to do a mural arts program with my students. And so I was able to buy supplies. I got $5,000 to buy supplies. And so I was able to take those supplies, put them into a kit and get those kit to the kids. And we were teaching before I was able to get the supplies. I didn't get the supplies to them until about December. And so we had, most of the semester was with just an online learning program or online art, art, visual arts program. That was okay. But when they got the art kits and we, I was able to actually lead them through a, creating a painting, you know, doing painting lessons where they're, they're, have a brush and paint and draw, and, and pencils and color pencils and everything right there in their hand. And they were able to manipulate, manipulate the, the materials. It was like somebody flipped the switch. They, the kids were, went from being, you know, happy to kind of be there with me, but to being engaged and being caring about their work and really wanting to learn more. and being caring about their work and really wanting to learn more about, you know, how to make what I'm asking them to make. So yes, go forward. Please go forward with adding more time for the kids with art, but also grow the program. Please fund it, fund it as well as you possibly can. I mean, I know it's a hard time and some districts are actually cutting our program at this point. So we're in a better spot than some. But it's, without that, without the funding to go forward and build the program, I would not have seen the look in the kids' eyes when they, when they got the kit in their hands and they finished their painting. It's quite, it's quite an experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bell Stracey, I don't see anybody else in the queue at this time.
Okay. Well, I want to, certainly want to thank everyone who did come.
No, actually, we.
Someone's popping in.
Yep, we have Polly Reader who's asking to join the meeting.
Okay, wonderful.
If Polly could just give us her address when she starts, Dr. Bell Stracey.
Okay. Hi Polly, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
And can you, yes, you can hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
And let's start the, okay, okay. Thank you.
Can you start just giving your address if you didn't type it in?
Yes, I did. Yeah, it was in this, it's the second after I put my name in, 280 Sage Hollow Road.
Terrific. Thank you. It's just for minutes.
Yes.
Thanks so much.
Sorry about that. I wanted to start by saying, appreciate your service very much. The incredible time commitment and thought from the board members. And I also wanted to say that the pandemic, the teachers, the staff, the school leadership, my children go to Cox and to Baldwin, has just been beyond what I could have imagined in terms of how positive they've been and what they've handled and in our lives. It's really amazing. I wanted to speak to a number of points quickly, if I could. I wanted to say support for the family equity liaison position. I think that's a smart way to, you know, bring the folks in with, bring in assistance without having it be another additional full-time role. And also for the residency program. I've seen a similar program at a large private university that was really successful in injecting some additional diversity into the faculty there. It worked really well. It was a smart move. And I think with that program, the one important item was to really have relational support for that particular cohort of individuals coming in new to our community. Switching gears, I wanted to say that I support very much the increase in art at the elementary level. And, I mean, really just sheerly, in part for the student agency that's inherent in the work of making art and the different type of learning that is. And I think that's very, very beneficial for students, increasing stress and anxiety in our youth in the US. And that was, you know, before the pandemic and what that's going to do for them. And it is unfortunate about the seeming trade-off with the foreign language. And, but I think, you know, it has been good that the cultural aspects, I've been seeing that be increased across the curriculum. So hopefully that could be considered even more with, if foreign language does have to be decreased. I do think, I do sort of wonder, it is certainly an end sum equation with the length of the school day at the elementary. But there's a significant amount of time, if you add it up, there has to be in the mask breaks, which are fantastic, absolutely fantastic, because I think they're giving kids a break, you know, regardless of the whole mask situation. And I hear very, very positive things about those. And we know the research says that, you know, you take a break every hour, adults need to. I don't necessarily, but you need to, to have, you know, best functioning. So if you add that time up, but yet the school seems to still be quite accomplishing its regular curriculum, even with that time taken out. I do think it would be helpful, kind of moving to a different point, to really assess and talk with the teachers about what their experience is this year with having the kids taking these frequent breaks. And actually, at least at Cox, and my kids, they go outside as much as possible. That's a very different experience from what it was in the past. And I hear from my kid, even when he is loving it, because he cohorts you now, but when he did go to school in person, loved in-person day, you know, was just so happy to be able to be at school and has a wonderful classroom and comfortable environment, still. Five minutes on the playground. Mom, we got a whole five minutes. This today, Mom, I think we got six to seven. I mean, it was just, it was such a high point and such a powerful experience. And I think that's not just in how his spirit and how he experienced the day, but it has impacts in cognitively, how the kids are approaching their work and their focus. So, and lastly, I'm sorry, let me just see here. And I just, well, I think actually, I'm looking at a whole page of notes and I think I actually did just really cover most of it. I'm sorry, the one last point I wanted to say is, I've heard with the DLT meeting that the board had fantastic conversations and questions. And really, really strongly support how seriously the board, the board were really kind of pushing and asking the leadership staff about, you know, do you really need or should we put in place some more social workers? What are we going to have coming out of this pandemic experience? It's already, you know, so hard on the kids. What more are we going to need? Or could be needed next year? And it's hard to project that, but it seems like we could have used more probably before the pandemic. Already, you know, there was an increased need at, in placing it at the high school and at Adams. So it would seem to make perfect sense to go ahead and plan additional staffing in terms of social work for our kids or that type of role for their social, emotional health. And, you know, and honestly, to kind of coach in that way for the, for the teachers, because that's not, you know, their forte. And the last thing I wanted to say is related to the students coming back with so many different needs, is they've had so many different learning experiences this year and they're academically going to be all over the place, much more than they, you know, would ever be normally. And we already rely so much, and I've heard Dr. Freeman talk about it certainly, how much our teachers individualize their approach for the students. And I've certainly seen it and it's really amazing. And I can't imagine putting that load on teachers to do even more with that and have students be even more disparate in their academic needs. And then you add in the trauma of the pandemic and where kids are going to be at emotionally. So how do you approach that? I don't know. I just think about, you know, decreasing class sizes or if there can be teaching staff that truly could be a pretty high level of skill, but sort of float and go to where it could be needed for additional support all across grade three and four, or something like that, one additional person. Just concerned about that. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And again, I do not see anybody in the queue waiting to speak.
All right. Well, I do, I really want to thank everyone who came out to address the board last night and tonight. You know, we as a board really want to make sure that as we are making decisions, we have heard what the community is interested in. So we, you know, we now move forward with considering all of these inputs, considering the budget that's before us. We next meet as a board next Monday night. I believe the agenda for next Monday is deliberation and a possible vote on the budget. We will vote on the budget on Monday night if we feel prepared to do so. If in fact, as we sit down together remotely over Zoom and find our discussions requiring either more time, looking into more information that we might need to help make some final decisions, we will end up then deferring the vote probably by a week to the following meeting. So I just want to alert the public who may be interested in hearing those deliberations that it is a potential vote next Monday or the following Monday. Once the Board of Ed does vote on a final budget, the budget will then go to the Board of Finance. They will, with the Board of Education budget and the Board of Selectment budget, the town budget, then do their own deliberations and make their own decisions. So that is the process as it unfolds. Dates will be available for when those meetings occur. Dr. Freeman, do you have anything else to add before we close for this evening?
No, Dr. Bell Stracey, only to say that again, I really appreciate the level of engagement in the budget deliberations this year. We've said this a number of times over this really unusual school year, but the level of community participation, it feels like it's been greater and I just very much appreciate the email communications and the number of people who came out last night and tonight. It feels like we had a larger-than-usual participation and I appreciate that. I really like hearing from the community and have the community involvement. I look forward to further deliberations with the board on Monday.
Terrific. Many people, perhaps some on the meeting tonight have emailed us as well. People are encouraged to do so. If they have not, we are more than welcome to hear from you in that way as well. I would encourage folks to feel free to put all of the Board of Ed members' email addresses on the email. Trust, when I say that when they're coming only to me, they absolutely get to the rest of the board, but they don't get to the rest of the board necessarily instantaneously. So that I want to make sure that everyone on the board gets your comments in as timely a manner as possible. So I'm just, I'm about a day backed up trying to get those all forwarded. So please know that all of them are being read. They are all being forwarded. But if you have not yet sent an email and would like to do so, please try to get all of our email addresses on your email and then it goes directly to all the members of the board. All of our email addresses are on the Guilford Public Schools website. So again, welcome, welcome your comments. I am going to thank my colleagues for another night of public forum and ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight.
So moved.
So moved, Dr. Hirsch, second, Mrs. Sullivan, all in favor. I, wonderful, have a wonderful evening. We look forward to seeing you Monday night.
Thank you, everyone.